And happy new year to everybody and welcome to the city of Fort Lauderdale. We have Mr. City Manager, do you want to talk to us about the agenda this afternoon?
Sure, yeah, I can talk quickly on it. So there was four items that were published, two reports that the auditor has put on the agenda. We'll turn it over to him to discuss. There was an item that dealt with a grant allocation of funding this afternoon. We'll talk about that. There was a waterway update item that was added to the agenda. I believe it's the desire of, for a host of reasons, the least of which is Commissioner McKenzie wants to participate as well as others from the public on the waterway update. So I'd ask that you all would consider deferring that until January 18th.
Okay, so would that be, would that be CF2 and business one?
No, it would just be the business one item, the waterway update item. Let me, I don't know them exactly off the top of my head by number. Let me look here real quick.
Okay, CS, CF1 was regarding, not regarding the water. It's the only, the only water quality item was business.
Should be business one, correct.
We had one person who signed up to speak, Tricia Halliday. So just so that you know, Trish, that we will not be discussing that this afternoon and we'll be deferring that to January 18th. So the rest of the items will remain on the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct. We should have CF1 and 2 and business 2. We'll handle those then reports and that'll be the balance of this afternoon's meeting.
Okay, great. So, so welcome back, everybody. Commissioner McKenzie could not join us today, but the rest of us, welcome back. I hope you had a great holiday. Thank you. And I, I know we're going to do some more great things in 2022. So let us begin. There were no communications. So let's just begin right with CF1, Carr, Riggs and Ingram. John, is that something you'd like to, to introduce to the commission?
Thank, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I'm going to have Megan Gallard present our two items for you today.
Everyone's passing the buck here.
I'd say I have broader shoulders, but I don't.
Yeah.
Megan Gallard, for the record.
Try to speak into the microphone a little bit because I can't hear you.
The status update is a report from Carl's CRI, our outside vendor for the Aquatic Center renovation project. They completed review of 37 monthly pay applications, 13 change orders, stale invoice analysis, interim status reports, and monthly calls as needed with the project managers. During their review, they identified approximately $350,000 of funds that was billed incorrectly that the city could obtain back. To date, the city's obtained back approximately $260,000 with another $40,000 to be credited. There's an outstanding difference of about $55,000, which is in part because we're waiting for a response from one of the vendors for truck and maintenance charges for $45,000 and an insurance markup for $9,000 that they're still looking into.
So have these, have these discrepancies been acknowledged and accepted by the vendors?
$260,000 plus the $40,000 they're going to credit back. The only two that are still outstanding is the $45,000 for truck and maintenance charges and $9,000 for insurance markups.
And you're still working on that?
They're still working on finding resolution.
All right, that's significant. Thank you.
Right. So there, the amount that they found and the city was able to get back is about double what the actual billing fee was. So it had a very significant positive impact. And they completed their review through July 31st of this year. So we're planning on doing an amendment to increase so they can continue to look at the pay apps through the end of the project, which is anticipated for April 30th. And then the final report, including the closeout process, should be completed around August of 2022.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Does that complete your report? Does that complete your report? Great.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Now we move on to CF2, independent external quality review. John?
Once again, Commissioner, I will let Megan introduce the report to you and explain what we underwent and the results of that review. Thank you.
I got to figure out how this defer to somebody else thing works.
I'm not taking your items.
I have a vice mayor that I can defer.
You, you have too many big items, Chris, way too many. So, so the first question's basically who audits the auditor? And as part of our generally accepted governmental auditing standards that are our requirement to follow by the charter, we have to undergo a peer review audit every three years where an outside auditor comes in and audits all of our stuff. So Chris, we do go through the same process we put you through, if that makes you feel a little better. So when they come in, they look at all of our audits, our work papers, they conduct interviews, they make sure we're complying with the different required standards for supporting documentation, independence, continued education requirements, and various other requirements within the work papers. So this year, they covered a 39-month period because they had missed three months on the last one. So we brought it current through September 30th. And the final opinion from the external auditor that looked at us was that our system of quality control was suitably designed to comply with all of the standards and provide reasonable assurance that we comply with everything in all material respects.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? There being none, thank you so much for your report. We appreciate it. Thank you, John, for the work that you provide to the city and for keeping, keeping our noses clean and.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to say that Megan was instrumental in this peer review that we just did. So she's only been with us now since June of last year, but she shepherded that project through and was able to compile all the information and get us to a position where we were able to get through that process, I would say, very, very easily. So I just want to thank her publicly for everything she did.
Great. Okay, moving on to business one. That's going to be deferred. Moving forward to business two. This is discussion regarding expenditure and related to the scope of the work for fiscal year 2021 for First Call for Help, Broward, Inc. Apparently, they submitted an application seeking $10,000 based on the type of expenditure that they anticipated. When we did an audit of their expenditures, it turned out that they spent money for things that were not authorized. Does anyone want to talk to this? Whose, whose recommendation was this? Which organization, which one of us recommended First Call for Help?
So maybe I can just give a little bit of background here. I'm not exactly sure who recommended it. I might have even recommended it, that it was, that it was included. When this was initially proposed, we were largely in the virtual world, as you know, and, and many of the items that were included in the scope of work initially were presented as virtual opportunities for students. What, what we learned as we started to do reconciliation is that there were actual opportunities to be out in public and together again, and that some of the programs that were implemented were implemented that brought students together as opposed to connecting them in a virtual place. Because this was a reimbursement basis as we did do the audit of the grant, the things that were submitted for reimbursement just weren't simply contemplated in the original scope of the grant itself. In order to consider potentially amending that scope, it's appropriate that we bring this back to the commission because the commission was the one that approved the initial scope. You could really do a couple of different things. And initially, I took the perspective, if you were to ask what is the staff recommendation, the recommendation at this point is that the items that were submitted for reimbursement are not reimbursable because they don't match. And, you know, we could continue with that position and say it just, it isn't what it was intended to be initially, and, and it just simply doesn't match. Or we could say, gosh, it would have been nice to have learned about this modification before it had occurred. So we could have consented to it ahead of time. But we understand that just as much good was done in the, in the promoting of, of students with the activities that occurred than would have been done if it was done virtually and we're okay consenting to the reimbursement of the expenses on the backend. So I'm just looking for some guidance as to whether or not you have interest.
So the original scope of the services said, there were, there were three things. There was virtual career town halls for the purpose of, of setting up a conference, YouTube conference, and public health industry career conference. Second was a, was career workshops featuring college and career readiness tools. And the third were visits to colleges, companies, and sectors of the military to learn about a variety of careers. And they may have done that, but in addition to that, they took a trip to the IMAX Theater and spent $4,410 to do that. Bus transportation, $900. Pizza for 100 bucks and a photographer for $200. They did have scholarship workshops for $800 and they had several Zoom meetings. And. They did have scholarship workshops for $800 and they had several Zoom meetings and, uh, which, um, and then they had a, a concierge life, Inc., which, um, I don't see anything to, I don't see any visits to military installations. I don't see anything to do with any other things. So this is completely outside of the scope. Anyone have any thoughts on this?
I do.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, yes, I, I do believe, especially in light of the fact that we have a lot of non-profit grants, um, in the works for this year especially, that we should have a clear communication with whoever's getting the funding, that they have to, you know, fund only what they've applied for. So I guess my question would be, did, did we, or do we have a clear, uh, plan when people receive the funds that this is what you have to spend it for? Or do we just say we're giving you 10,000 and try to match as close as possible? Like what, what do we say once we award the grant to?
And that's, that's why this one is in front of us today is because it's probably more of the exception rather than the rule because we define in the scope of work with the participation agreement. What is to be done?
Okay.
Um, this is just one that came back with receipts for reimbursables that didn't match what we had approved in the agreement.
So I guess if we clearly define what the funding is, needs to be used for, then we should only reimburse what we define, which is my opinion.
Chris, I have a question. For example, do we do one of these not-for-profit grant participation agreements with every single not-for-profit that we, uh, fund?
They're not all identical, but there is an agreement, yes.
For instance, I know later today we have, uh, one for 78,000. I mean, this is just 10,000, but we have one for 78,000. Will there be a specific like this scope of services, activities, deliverables, determined time of performance, financial reporting? Will we have this specificity for that particular not-for-profit as well as every other not-for-profit that we're funding?
I'm going to look to Laura, if she's here, because her group is the one that puts all these together. Let me ask Laura to come up and, and confirm that specifically. I, I know based upon the dollar value, there's differing types of agreements that we enter into, um, but, uh, let me let Laura speak on the specifics.
And I ask that question because I, my main concern is that we, you know, treat everybody equitably and, um, with the same type of agreements, the same type of, um, enforcement in terms of scope of services. Uh, so when I look at this agreement that was signed back on, uh, I guess the 20th of, whenever, I'm looking for a date. That's interesting.
It was the December 2nd. December 2nd is the, is the date on the, of the.
Yeah, the actual, the actual contract, if you want to call it that, was the 18th of November 2020. But I just want to make sure that we have this kind of specificity in every, uh, not-for-profit that we are funding.
Hey, um, good afternoon, Commissioner. Laura Reese, Director, Office of Management and Budget. So, um, historically we've had agreements with every organization that have all of the requirements, um, such as the insurance and audit requirements. Um, the two on the agenda tonight, um, are, they also have scopes. So for example, for the, um, Northwest Women's Federation, it says that you're going to purchase certain, they're going to purchase certain things and we're going to reimburse them for it. So it's always under scope of services. This year, for the first time since there were so many more agreements, you all approved at a very high level around 35 organizations that were, I believe, 25,000 or less. And those agreements aren't going to come to the commission. So they'll be like two-page agreements that say what they're going to do with the money. And then we give them the money upfront and then they have to give us a report in the, at the backend because it would be administratively burdensome to have, um, like those, I think it's sometimes like 13, 14-page agreements. So this year, for the first time in fiscal year 22, you have around 35 organizations that the full contract won't come to the commission. You approved, uh, one, one item that had a variety on it.
And we are actually paying, we actually are paying upfront as opposed to reimbursable.
For, for the ones that you approved altogether, they'll get a check upfront and then they'll give us a report on the backend instead of reimbursement requests like this one. And it's just because this year there's so many more with the new not-for-profit process.
What would happen if we ran into this kind of a situation where you've already paid an organization and then, um, you found that what was to be delivered or what was in the scope of service really did not happen? What would you do then, since you paid upfront?
Right, so we had this discussion with legal and we would pursue under, you know, we'd ask for them to repay us the funds that weren't in compliance. And, um, we'd have to go through legal means to give it back if they did not repay us.
So there is though someone who will be looking at all of those scopes and deliverables and making sure that that, uh, matches what was told to us in advance?
Yeah, so it'll just be one year end report that those 35 organizations will give us and then we'll confirm that they did the things that they said they were going to do.
Okay, thank you. So Laura or Chris, with regards to the item that's in front of us, was a question asked of the organization, why there was this difference or what happened or?
I think we did and I, I think it had to deal with, and Colleen's here. She can certainly speak to it. Um, I think it, it largely is the fact that the difference between being in a virtual environment versus being in person. But let's, like, might as well take the benefit of the fact that Colleen's here in the audience to, uh.
But can I just say one thing? A virtual environment versus an in-person environment? I fully understand where you're going with that, but to spend $4,400 to go see a movie and Fast and Furious nine, I have, that has nothing to do with career and job placement, which is what the original mission was, was stated. So, okay, that I need to understand how that happened with $200 for pizza.
Hi there. Thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners and City Manager. Just to clarify, the organization for which this funding was provided is an organization called Bridge to Life. It's the local college access network and the umbrella organization or fiscal agent is 211 Broward. Uh, what we submitted for was programming over the summer. As we all know, last year's, uh, school had many, many challenges and there was a increased effort to get summer programming in the classroom. But after-school programming for college and career, we were requested to provide that. So we provided four nights a week from June 21st through July 29th of college-going and career readiness workshops. They were entirely virtual. Midpoint way through that, we offered the incentive to come to MODS for a VIP IMAX experience accompanied by, uh, career and college tables out front. Broward College had a table, Holman Automotive had a table, Broward County Libraries had a table, B2L had a table, and we were accompanied by you, Mayor, uh, the Chair of the School District, Dr. Osgood, Chief Education Officer, Zoe Saunders. This incentive for the students was in response or for them completing college-going tasks. And it was an opportunity. We had hoped that we would get some level of discount, uh, but I think a lot of, all of us are struggling. So that was the full price to bear for the rental of the IMAX, um, IMAX, uh, studio. The $99 for pizza was to provide support for the volunteers that were there to handle registration. And this was all to empower our students to prepare for college and future livable wage careers. We did not host a military career conference. Uh, we didn't have Fleet Week last year. That will occur this May, um, but we did not do that. But the other requirements of the contract were fulfilled. The submission of the expense items that we provided were not included under the excluded expense items. And when this agreement was signed, we were heavy into COVID and lockdown, um, in December of 2020. By this past summer, we had the opportunity to provide an in-person experience. And we felt that that incentive of attending the movie was a beneficial incentive for students to empower them.
So Colleen, just a question though. When you were able to come back after the lockdown instead of that, why couldn't you do those scope of service activities in person?
The opportunity to reach more students more easily as opposed to specific school sites, uh, was provided via the, the virtual option. It also allowed us to use one speaker at a time. We partnered with Comerica Bank for Financial Literacy. We partnered with Broward College for Financial Aid and FASDA Guidance. Uh, and we partnered with the Scholarship Plug, if you will, to talk scholarships and personal essays.
Thank you. And then Chris had mentioned that no one contacted, um, city staff when obviously there was going to be a big change in the scope. Why not?
Perhaps this was our ignorance on how to prepare an adequate invoice package. Uh, we, I'm very grateful to the Office of Management and Budget for the guidance they have provided and the questions that they have raised. But our understanding was what we submitted, as long as it wasn't on the excluded list of what was not covered, salaries, alcohol, other things, that we were within our remit to provide those in our invoice package. So.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Colleen, thanks for, for being here and for this work, Ben. How well-attended was the, uh, the event at MODS?
953 students attended the virtual workshops between June 21st and July 29th. The attendance at the IMAX theater, they had limited capacity to, I believe it was 250 out of the 350 capacity. We had 120 attend. Um, we offered this incentive to students who had attended two or more workshops up to that date.
Great. And as you look back, do you feel like this series of events was successful, not successful, good outcomes? Would, would, how would you evaluate all this?
Our metrics were measured by the students who attended the workshops, but also we had, uh, a completion of college-going tasks that students could compete for. And there were five options. Apply to college, complete five scholarship applications, complete your FASFA if you're a high school senior, um, attend, I think you had to attend at least one of each of the workshops. We had four e- every week. And if kids, uh, um, completed three of the five college-going tasks, they earned a mini scholarship award. And we had, uh, 29 students complete three of the five, but we had hundreds, obviously 953 kids attend, um, and very well-attended, very well-received. And in absence of this programming being provided by the school district because they take the summers off, the college advising department, it was particularly important and critical this summer to provide this programming.
Yep. Okay. Thanks. Mayor, I think, um, I, I think personally the intent was meant here, was, uh, achieved here and, um, I, I think that it's, it's appropriate to, to support this.
Okay, any other comments?
I'm still going to stick with my original.
Okay. I, I honestly, Colleen, um, we all know better. This, this was, my personal opinion is that these are totally inappropriate expenditures. Uh, yes, I did attend the event. I was happy to attend the event. I didn't know that we were paying for that event. And, uh, you know, uh, you know, the, this is a lot of money. And, uh, um, and, you know, it's totally outside the scope, but if the majority seems to think, uh, you know, to, to let it slide, all I'm saying is it's a bad precedent for all the other organizations that think that they could snooker us by just, you know, asking for one thing and then doing something else and then using an excuse that, oh, well, we found a better way to do it and we didn't think it was necessary to come back and ask you for permission. I guess asking for permission is more difficult than seeking, um, than seeking, what's the expression?
Forgiveness.
And, uh, um, and I just, I don't know. I just feel that, you know, you, during the summer, spring and summer, you did have Zoom events, uh, which is exactly what, you know, the application asked for. Hey, I don't want to put your organization into bankruptcy here by, you know, saying we're not going to reimburse you, but I don't know how we can honestly say that this, you know, that we gave this money in good faith and that it was actually spent in, in the same way. So I don't know. I, I, it's up to what the rest of the commission wants to do.
Mayor or Chris, does it have to be, um, all or nothing? I, I mean, are we able to go through these line items? Does it have to be $10,000 or zero?
I think the commission's got as much latitude as it, discretion as it wants.
I, and I, and I know what you're saying, Mayor, and I, I understand, and I do. But I, I mean, I think this organization does incredible work. But you are right in terms of from a grant standpoint, you have to stick to a standard and you have to, um, I mean, typically, uh, most, I would say, I would venture to guess that most places that had grants administration, and that's, I guess, why, um, city staff brought it in front of us, would, would have a difficulty with this. And you're right, it does set a precedent. For me though, in terms of the money that we have allocated to the not-for-profits, this is not a, um, significant amount. It's not a large amount. And I think that some of the work is detailed here that did happen. Um, I'm, I'm willing to go through this and maybe not grant the entire, you know, 10,000, but I, I, I do think that we have to, uh, reimburse at least, uh, 50% of it.
What was the last sentence?
But I do think we have to reimburse, uh, at least, uh, 50%. I, I'm having issues with the movie, as you had mentioned. And I, but, uh, I, to me, I, even if you remove that, you're still at about 6,000. So I, I still think you have, I, I, I'm still willing to fund, um, some of these activities because I do think that it was, uh, all for a good purpose and I think it is worthy of reimbursement. But, um, I'm, I'm just struggling with the full 10,000. That's where I am.
Okay. Um, I, I'm with you. I mean, I could support that, um, because I, obviously there was a lot of, there was money spent, uh, in line with what the original request, um, sought. Uh, so I'm with you there. But, you know, it's just, it just sets a bad precedent because other organizations are going to come in, they're going to say, well, you know, we thought you'd just let us do it anyway. And, um, and I'm not sure if, whether we're even going to give nonprofits money next, in the next, uh, funding cycle anyway, depending upon how much money we earn as a city. But, um, be that as it may, does anyone agree with the, the Commissioner's recommendation? What was it, 60%?
Yes.
Was it the 10,000 minus the 44 or 10?
I, I would just, I, I would be fine with 6,000.
Just 6,000 instead of the 10.
Which would basically be removing the IMAX. I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that? Okay. Commissioner, uh, Sorenson?
Was the use of the IMAX theater, was it solely for a movie or were there other, was there anything else happening in the IMAX movie?
We had speakers in front. So Mayor spoke, Dr. Osgood spoke, uh, I believe Dr. Hickman or David Watkins from the school district spoke as well. Um, we also showed a reel of snippets from the workshops at the beginning that preceded the movie. I can tell you the students left feeling like the message of the movie spoke to them, right? Empowerment, resilience, et cetera. Now, this has been a lesson learned. Appreciate the feedback. Obviously, I think the process and the clarification for what's appropriate or not, uh, needs to be clarified by us going forward. So I hear you and appreciate the feedback.
You know, I, I think I made my, my, my feelings, but I'm, I'm happy to do what the majority want to do here.
Okay. All right.
I've got direction.
All right, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Okay, um, Commission reports. Vice Mayor?
See, see, Happy New Year. Things we discussed at our District One meeting, uh, Monday night.
Could you speak into your microphone?
Yes, I'm sorry. Is it on?
It's on, but I, I, your, your mouth is a.
I have like.
Hard of hearing these days, so.
Plexiglas between us. Okay, Happy New Year. Good to see everyone again. Uh, Chris, one thing that we discussed at my District One Monday night is the option of allowing our boards to meet via Zoom. Are we, um, able to kind of reinstate that until we, the numbers of COVID go down? I was just asked and I said I would discuss it with you all.
So I, actually, let me go to the city attorney and let him, um.
Oh, yes, here he is.
Who's on Zoom?
Who's on Zoom?
Hey, Alan.
Yes, I'm on Zoom. Good afternoon, Alan Boillo, City Attorney. It, it's, it is an option, although it's, it's all encompassing. So, uh, recognizing that we have, you know, 40-plus boards, if we turn back to remote participation, um, obviously it's not just for board members, it would be for members of the public. And then you get back into the situation, obviously, where you're running essentially two meetings. So it's certainly a business decision. It's a policy decision on your part. There's nothing legally preventing you from doing that, uh, except that, well, it depends who you ask. Because, you know, right now, if you go to the state, they're going to say it's not really permissible because technically there's. they're going to say it's not really permissible because technically, there's no pending state of emergency. Although Broward County, every seven days, has been renewing its state of emergency since the beginning of the pandemic. So there is one in place for the county. So we can rest our hats on that. But, so yes, if you want to do it, you can do it, and we'll protect that decision as much as possible. Nobody's challenged us in the two years that this has been going on, so I don't foresee anybody challenging us any further. It wasn't addressed by the Florida Legislature in the last special session regarding COVID. So had there been a significant problem with governmental entities continuing with some remote aspects of their meetings, I think that would have been brought up. But, you know, who knows what will happen in the next session. But for the time being, that would be within your discretion.
So what do you all think about the possibility of maybe we look at it month by month? Is it too difficult to manage with the board meetings, you know, coming up and fluctuating at different times?
Well, I think that the commission should still meet in person.
Right. The commission, I'm happy to come in person as well. Just, the request was for our boards, our city boards. So some of the members at my District One who sit on boards, they felt kind of uncomfortable coming in person at this point.
I mean, I'm okay. I just, I happen to believe that in-person engagement is far more impactful than being on Zoom. But, you know, if the boards themselves are finding themselves not able to secure quorums because people are afraid of the spread of the virus, I do understand that. Any thoughts, Commissioner Glassman, Commissioner Sorenson?
Chris, what's the financial business impact if we do virtual?
It's just the staff necessary to, to make all of those meetings happen. We essentially do what we do for this room, we do it twice. We got very good at managing it, so I don't want it to sound as though it's this formidable task that we're not capable of. I mean, we did it for, did it and got quite good at it. And we could certainly go back to it. It's hard to go back and forth, I'll tell you that, because the expectation of the public is just, you know, you were allowed virtual, now you're not, then you were, and we had people that wanted to appear virtually today that I had to say no to, so that we didn't, you know, create different classes of people appearing in different ways. So if you all, as policy setters, say that you want to allow the virtual option, I would just be, I would caution us against bouncing back and forth.
Right.
And if we, if we go there, then when we decide that we're going to not go there anymore, it either needs to be as a function of the law changing, or some other mandate of a higher body, or we really are certain that we're ready to, ready to fall back into an in-person environment.
If I, if I may add, sorry to jump in, but one thing also, it does affect our advertising, so it's not, it's not an easy switch on or off. Because, so, for example, we've already advertised, or we're advertising for the meeting on the 18th. When we do that, we advertise notice of where the meeting is going to take place. So, for example, we've been advertising in-person meetings. So when you add a component, either way, and you change a component, it affects all the advertising for the next meeting or the meeting thereafter. So there are some, it's not as easy as switching on and off. We sometimes are able to re-advertise and had insufficient time before the meeting, but that may be affected. So it may not be, yes, let's do it, and the next meeting is virtual. We may have to wait a little longer than that, but it does impact advertising.
Okay. Thanks, Alan. Is there a certain statute, Alan, or emergency order we're falling under by allowing city commission committees to meet virtually?
Well, the city commission and committees and boards are treated the same in that respect. The position the state is taking now, primarily the governor's office and the attorney general, would be that now that the state's state of emergency is over, that there's not a justification for doing virtual components to these meetings. The approach we had taken originally was we were all under a state of emergency state, city, as well as county. And under that guise, if you recall, the conversation was regarding quorums, whether they needed to be physical or not. There was unanimous support throughout the state to have the public also, obviously, appear remotely, be for safety reasons. But since there are no safety protocols in place, it's a little harder to justify remote participation when there are no other criteria or no other restrictions in place. It just makes it a little harder to sell. But back to my original point, we haven't been challenged on it. At worst, if there would be a challenge coming from the state or anyone else, that we should not be doing remote participation, you know, at worst, it could invalidate a decision here and there. But since you all are choosing to be there physically, I think that's more of the important aspect. But again, the less and less we have in the way of emergency protocols, the more difficult it is to justify remote participation.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Glassman. My thinking is, city commission meetings, maintain in-person, and city commission committee meetings to have the virtual option and reevaluate, you know, in a month from now, would be my suggestion, or if we're challenged. Thanks.
Mayor, I just wanted to, again, use the word that the city manager, city attorney used. I think for consistency's sake, we're better off just staying what we're doing right now. Because I do see us in the future going through uptick in cases. I think this is just going to always be a continual roller coaster from here on out. And I think what's going to happen is, it will be confusing, people won't know when it's virtual or not. What I would say to the boards and committees is I would urge folks, you know, come to City Hall, wear a mask in your committee meeting. Hopefully, these meetings are set so that people are not on top of each other, so that they have some distance between each other.
That's a good point. Are they in this room now? Do they have the option of using this room? Are they on the eighth floor still?
They're in both places. But primarily, we try to use this room when we can. But there are times it's double booked, and we have to also overflow it upstairs.
But I think we can make sure that people feel comfortable in terms of being, having a certain amount of distance between them. I'm just nervous about the fact that every time we see a peak in cases, we're going to run back to that, and it's just going to be back and forth and back and forth. I just think that that's going to create more problems. I just think that, again, just to be consistent, knowing that we're going to be facing one variant after another, most likely, and the numbers are going to be going up and down and up and down and up and down. I just think that we should keep it the way it is right now and urge people to do what they need to do to manage risk for themselves. And I said, wear a mask and stay safely distanced and...
And get vaccinated.
And be vaccinated. Yeah. I mean, that would always be my first, my first, you know, caution would be, hey, there is a way out of this. Everyone needs to be vaccinated, and now everyone needs to be boosted.
Well, do you, do you, do you think there's an argument, though, that we should err on the side of caution? And, yeah, there will be up and downs in the, in the infection rate and, and hospitalizations. So because of that, do you think we should revert to virtual meetings for the boards and committees until such time, I guess, I was going to say, until such time as the disease is eradicated? But I don't think it's ever going to be eradicated, right? At least not in the near future, based on what the science tells us. So, all right. So Commissioner Sorenson, what was, what was your recommendation again?
My recommendation was, like, I, I just think virtual is a wonderful option for folks. And even if it's a few folks who don't feel comfortable or have comorbidities, and even if they're vaccinated, they could still get this virus. So...
And that's been shown. I agree.
Right. So I just, I just, I think about those folks. So my suggestion was just, hey, city commission meetings, as we're doing, remain in-person only. City committee meetings, have the virtual option for those that, that would like it and would like to avail themselves of it. And then reevaluate this a month from now in our next first meeting of February.
Would people be able to participate virtually at our meetings, or that still only be in-person only?
I would say only in, oh, sorry. I would say only in-person.
Oh, okay.
Would be my thought, but...
I agree.
Yeah. The only issue with that, again, Alan, remotely, the basis for going virtual is safety, that it's safer to not appear physically. That would be the argument to support that decision. It becomes difficult when you don't do it across the board, because then it's not safe for boards and committees, but it's safe for the city commission. It gets difficult to kind of coincide the two together. So that, that may cause an issue, and you'll have folks say, well, I can go, I don't have to go to P&amp;Z, but I have to go to city commission. So you may get some of that as well. So consistency may be important here.
Well, if you follow that through, why would, if you just follow that line of logic, why would we be saying that you have to be in-person, or that even the commission has to be in-person? That doesn't even make, but yet, if a board or committee does not have to be in-person?
It would, I think being consistent would probably be best also, across the commission and, and boards. Do we know what other cities are doing in our county?
I do not. I could quickly find out, but I do not. I think most have returned. I don't think...
All right. So why don't we just keep things status quo right now, until we see how things go? Because, I mean, unless we're having a problem getting quorums, which I don't really...
I don't think that was it. I think it was just some personal concerns. But I do think as much as possible, if we can use a room like this, where people can spread out a little bit more, because the eighth floor is, is much smaller than this. Or if they open up the eighth floor, so the partition is open, and maybe they could spread out a little bit more. And maybe we just provide masks and sanitizer and everything we've been doing, you know, I think.
Okay.
All right. One, one last thing. Sorry, and then I'll move on. So we have the LPR readers in place now, I believe. I know, Ben, we talked about this in your district too, the LPR, I believe it's our two districts. Are, how, I don't know if they're up and running, but how is the public able, or the neighborhoods, how are they able to get that data? Have we had, or how do we plan on sharing that data with them? Or can we share it with them? Because I know they've given the ability to the police department to tap into it. I guess, I guess monitoring it and getting it back to the neighbors was just a question they...
Yeah, there was never an intent to give it back to the neighbors. Our only, our only interest in having it put in is so that we can be a receipt of the information, but we don't intend to share it.
Vice Mayor, the way the agreements have been, the agreements with the company as well, is that the, the provider of the cameras and those operating and collecting the data, they own the data, and they share it with the police department. But the intent was never for, as the city manager correctly stated, was never for the residents to have access to that. It's merely for investigative purposes, should something occur. It's not live, obviously, it's not live monitoring. It's just if something occurs, there's data that we can look at that can assist in investigations. But the company owns that data, the residents do not have access to it.
Okay. So I...
I'll tell you one step further. If that request were actually made, I would strongly recommend we not receive the data from the neighborhood's cameras, and that we put cameras in based upon where we believe there's an investigative need.
Okay. Because going back and forth would be...
Well, I don't, I can't argue strongly that where they're placed today is where they have the most need in our city. But I understand that the neighborhood wants them there, and so we want to partner with the neighborhood. And we'll certainly use the information if we need it. But there are some places in our city that probably, you could argue, have a stronger need for the LPR technology than where they're currently... You know, we've got several out there, and we move ours around, so they're not fixed.
What would the neighbors want the information for if it hadn't occurred?
We were just talking at the District One Monday night about different crimes that have been committed in the neighborhoods. And then they just asked if that was a source of data that could be shared, like this happened. But like you said, I think it's almost the opposite. The police use it in case there, there is a crime.
Correct.
They go in and use it. It's not like it's monitoring and collecting data to be shared with neighbors. So we're just going over that. And then just the police website, and just where neighbors get information from to keep updated about different crimes and burglaries and stuff like that in our neighborhood. So the LPR conversation came up, because we just installed those in the landings. And then I think down in, in La Solas, was it Normie Isles?
No, they, I think they rejected that.
I think that's right.
Normie's hasn't done it yet?
It's in Real Vista.
They opted out.
They opted out? So maybe it's real. Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll let them know that it's, it's not for that purpose.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and wishing everyone, again, a happy and healthy new year ahead. Hope everyone had wonderful holidays. Just a few...
We know you did.
You do?
We know that you did.
Okay. Well, I did. Thank you.
Did you enjoy your cruise?
I did. Thank you very much. Yes. Yes. Thank you. Let's see. Just a few, few things. We have Central Beach Alliance membership meeting focusing on Bahia Mara, Thursday, the 13th, coming up. And also, I wanted to congratulate, Bonnet House has its 100th anniversary dinner gala this, this Friday, celebrating 100 years.
Are you going?
I will be attending.
Oh, I will too.
Yes. Well, I'll see you there. Yes. Wonderful, wonderful. One of my, one of my favorite historic locations in Fort Lauderdale, and in District Two, as a matter of fact. So yes. So congratulations, 100 years. That's, that's really quite an accomplishment, when you think of it. And that it really is a magical place for anyone. And, you know, I'm always surprised, Mayor, how many times I mention it to people, and people in Fort Lauderdale that have never been there, never been there. I mean...
Lovely. I agree.
Excuse me?
The first 30 years of my being here, I never went there either.
First what?
My first 30 years living here.
Thirty?
Wow.
Thirty, yes. I've never been, I had never been there. It was only like 10 years ago was my first time.
Wow. Well, that's what I'm saying. Exactly. So maybe they need some new marketing people. Because it really is something that people need to see. And when you think that that was the, the way the entire Barrier Island looked at that time, the entire Barrier Island just looked like that. It's, it's really, it's really quite amazing. So congratulations to Bonnet House on its 100th anniversary. Just a few questions. Chris, I've been getting some emails recently. There's some concern about trees that are being basically taken down and removed in Holiday Park with the work that's going on. I did receive an email the other day that they're noticing red dots on certain trees. And one of the residents actually complained that there is a red dot on what she considers to be the most iconic mahogany tree in Holiday Park. So maybe if we could just sort of take a look at what's going on in Holiday Park with the removal of trees for the work that's going on, because I have been getting several emails about that. Always get emails about the tree ordinance, and I know that's coming to us soon, thank goodness. But I did want to mention the Holiday Park situation.
Okay.
In connection with the War Memorial?
Well, with, yes, that's, you know, is that work going on. And then there'll be other projects that are going on as well. So I just wanted to bring it up, because once we start looking at the garage, and eventually maybe, although it's closer to the street, the YMCA, but their paths, and there's a lot of other work that's going to be going on in the park. Chris, if you could maybe just update us, would love to know, some folks have been asking me about this too. We know that Mark Fine has left us for a position in another city. What is the process going forward with our Public Information Officer?
Yeah. So we've got a couple of openings citywide. We'll obviously go through recruitment process and replace where we have vacancies. Ashley, who's in the back of the room, is stepping in in the short term to facilitate and coordinate the operations of that office. And as we make some hiring decisions, then we'll get people in the right seats and move forward.
Okay. And timeline on that, maybe?
You know, those, I wish they all fit into a special mold, but sooner rather than later. And, you know, the next 90 to 120 days, hopefully, we can move faster than that. I sometimes mesmerize myself as to how fast I thought we could move, and then I realize that we too have a process that we have to get through. So...
I feel like that with a one-stop, actually.
I know you do. I know you do. So...
Well, even with the folks that you have on this interim basis, they've been really, really great. I mean...
Agreed.
I mean, the things we've been accomplishing over the last couple of weeks have been, have been very professional and very successful. So I thank all of them for all the work that they've done. So...
We do have a, we've got some good depth of talent in that, in that office right now. And it's, it's good to have there.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that. I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sorenson?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. It was kind of a full couple of weeks. It was great being with you at the Harbordale celebration.
This morning, yes.
Celebrating the completion...
Sewer pipes.
Of the sewer pipes.
Sewer pipes again.
Beautiful time to celebrate sewage. So that was, that was great. But it, you know, it just emphasizes the work the whole commission has done. And the driving force neighborhoods are in Fort Lauderdale and helping, you know, achieve really great outcomes these. So I was just really excited. And as a commission, it just underscores, I think, our emphasis on infrastructure and investing in infrastructure. Sitting there, Mayor, this morning, I mean, we didn't talk about it, but I was thinking of the ROI and the stopping of the ROI. the stopping of the ROI and just the, the dollars we have invested as a commission um, into infrastructure and continue to invest. And I'm just, I'm proud of that. Uh, and I'm proud of that piece as part of our legacy as we just, um, we keep working hard. So uh, thanks for that. As the whole commission for working and supporting. Um, couple, let's see, a couple of topics I want to touch on. One is, you know, somewhat sad, but also I think important to just talk about is, um, Giselle or Gis, Gisleen Maxwell and Jeffrey Epstein. So if anyone's been following this, just horrific, um, sex trafficking, um, sexual abuse, um, victims, uh, through this, this, this horrible, horrible deeds by, uh, Maxwell and Epstein. And, um, proud of the work. We have a, an attorney here in the city of Fort Lauderdale, um, Sigrid McCauley, who has been the, one of the primary advocates and representatives for the victims of Maxwell and Epstein and, um, Sigrid and a team of attorneys and prosecutors, um, led the effort in, uh, you know, getting convictions for Maxwell recently. And just, I just want to lift it up, Mayor, because it's just, I don't know whether it's me being, you know, having daughters or this matters. And I think having people in our community, and we've got many of them who are fighting for justice, fighting for young girls, fighting against sexual abuse and sexual trafficking and saying that it doesn't matter how much money you have. It doesn't matter what your prestige in society is, that, um, you'll be held to a, a standard. And I just, I just wanted to celebrate Sigrid and everyone else who's, who's working even behind the scenes for, for those girls. So.
All right.
Just wanted to celebrate her. Um, let's see. Uh, also, I don't, I don't know if we have as a commission have talked about this, just collectively cryptocurrency. I'm just a, I'm, I'm a big believer in the possibilities of cryptocurrency and, uh, you know, the possibilities of exploring it and, um, how we could leverage it as a city and look at payment options. And there's a lot of municipalities that are doing some creative things there. So just wanted to get a little sense of, from the commission, if that's something, you know, worth kind of, uh, exploring a little bit.
You know, I know Miami and Mayor Suarez have been very aggressive on this and, uh, and, uh, but I have to be honest with you. Um, while, while cryptocurrency and Bitcoin, the process has been explained to me, the more and more that I learn about it, the, the more frightened I am of the possibility of default. And, you know, this reminds me in the early eighties, when I first moved here, and the big thing going there was the International Gold Bullion Exchange. And we had a building right down the street here and with its name on it. And everybody was so excited and everyone was going to make money on the speculation that, um, that, that was going on at that time. And the problem is that this is mere speculation and you could lose a million dollars in a week. Uh, and, um, and I'm, I'm very concerned that, you know, putting the government money into, into an investment like that is so speculative that, you know, it could, it could, it could certainly bankrupt the city of Fort Lauderdale if we were ever, um, you know, invested in, in a way that, that would, would put us at risk. So honestly, Ben, I, I know it's exciting and I think the prospects are, you know, anytime there's such significant risk, the opportunities for gain are, are very high, but so are the opportunities for loss. Um, and, um, you know, maybe John, you could respond, uh, what you feel about Bitcoin and cryptocurrency and whether you feel there's a government role in participating in it?
So there's two aspects to that. So the first is whether or not we as an entity should be investing in Bitcoin. And the answer is no. It's a speculative investment and it doesn't fit with any of the guidelines that we have for our investment portfolio. The second part of it is should we accept Bitcoin as payment for any of the things that we currently bill for, whether it be water and sewer or liens or anything else? If we were to do that, it would be an undertaking that would require some expertise that we currently lack, but we could certainly explore it. The only thing I would suggest is if we do something along those lines, that we have a policy says that we immediately convert whatever Bitcoin we receive into a stable dollar amount. Because again, it's not considered to be an investment. It's not considered, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not considered to be currency. The IRS considers Bitcoin to be an investment and that's how it's viewed. And if it's an investment, it has to fall within the statutory guidelines for investments. So if we were to take it in, again, my recommendation is it needs to immediately be converted into cash. But if we want to be technologically proactive, we can certainly investigate. And this is something actually that we talked about a couple of years ago internally here at staff as to whether we wanted to look into cryptocurrency. And, and the consensus at that time was that the marketplace was not evolved enough for us to get, to get into it. Um, that will change over time. Certainly there are a lot of entities that, that take, or, or at least profess to take Bitcoin.
I mean, look, I, I mean, maybe I'm a little old fashioned. I'm a little bit more conservative when it comes to, you know, taxpayer money. I do see, you know, I am a little jealous that I see some of these governments around the state, you know, making money off of their investments, as you say, um, you know, uh, and, and maybe Fort Lauderdale could profit in some way. But you really have to be on top of it. You have to have a team, uh, dedicated to this on a daily basis, watching the fluctuations of the, of the, of the market. And, uh, and I know we're not currently prepared with, for that. We'd have to hire people. Um, but uh, I know it's a younger generation prerogative and, uh, and I'm not part of that generation. So maybe that's why I'm a little bit more conservative. But, um, and I can see where Commissioner Sorenson's coming from because the opportunities he sees are the same ones I see. But, um, just my personal perspective, I, I just don't want to see the city getting involved in that. You have any thoughts on that?
I, I, um, I'm a safe person as well. I really don't take risks, but I'm certainly open to looking into different possibilities.
Steve?
I have no understanding at all about cryptocurrency. It drives me crazy. I've actually tried to understand all of it and yet I can't wrap my head around it at all. So like you, Mayor, I think we're from a different generation. So, you know, just show me the green stuff, Mayor. Just show me the green stuff.
Young ones. I'm not that young. Ben, you're gonna have to take the lead.
Sure. Completely, completely fair. I think for me, it's a, as we think about positioning the city of Fort Lauderdale and being pro-business and bringing employers here, I think it just shows a willingness to advance technologically, to be open to innovation. And I think could just help from a, oh, from a attracting employer standpoint and new tech, you know, techies that are moving around. And, and I'm not saying investing in, I'm just saying, let's maybe just look into what would it be like if we could accept Bitcoin for some form of payments to the city? I think John's point about converting immediately to, to other currency, US dollar makes sense. Um, but, but could we at least maybe look at what that would entail?
All right. If you, if, if you can take a moment, John, and give us a, at some point, we, uh, provide us with some kind of report as to if we had to ramp up for something like that where people would be paying us in Bitcoin and how we could immediately convert it to, uh, you know, government currency. Uh, again, I, I don't see the advantage to the city because we, it's just currency to us and we're not making any money from that. We're just accepting another form of payment. Uh, so it's almost like, it's almost like we're taking foreign currency and converting it into US dollars. It's, I don't see any real difference.
Philosophically, you're right, Mayor. Um, so what I think we can do is I will have a talk with our folks over in Treasury and let them talk with our banking relationship people and find out if they're even set up in such a way as to do this. Um, there, there are a number of other issues that are associated with this, such as, you know, there's thousands of different cryptocurrencies out there. Uh, so from a technology perspective, I don't know if this is even at a point where we select one or two that we're willing to integrate with, or do we open ourselves up to the universe? And if we do accept one or two, how do we choose which ones, uh, from a governmental perspective? We're not a private entity where we say we're going to take Bitcoin or Ethereum or Dogecoin.
Right.
So, um, I, I think that's a little problematic, but we can look into that. Um, but then there's also the issue about, um, the anonymity of the payment behind it. How do we verify who the payment actually is coming to us from? So there are some questions. Uh, certainly we can look into it. And again, I'll, I'll coordinate with, uh, with our Treasury Department and see if we can bring something back for your consideration.
All right. Cause it also begs the question, why doesn't the Bitcoin holder or the cryptocurrency holder just convert it and then pay us? You know, why should we take the risk of that conversion, you know, upon tender of their Bitcoin? You know what I'm saying? It's, it's a.
I would also caution, um, this is Alan again. I was also cautioned just to, a note that we would need to look at our.
That's the wizard.
Wait.
Sorry.
Can you repeat it? Cause you broke up.
Sorry. I, I would just caution also that we would need to look at our bond covenants as to whether we would be permitted to accept that type of, uh, payment with regards to anything that may be covered by bonds.
Okay. Good, good point.
And, and Mayor, that's, that, that's why I think it'd be so helpful just to understand what's even possible. And maybe just, we're just very limited and we can't, but just knowing what we could do if we wanted to.
Okay. Cool.
Um, okay. Great. Thanks. Appreciate that. And then last thing I have, Mayor, is just, and you were probably going to already talk about this, um, is just the tunnel, um, the New River Tunnel and just kind of, I just want to get an update. How's it going? You know?
Well, there's a resolution on the agenda tonight.
Right.
And, um, uh, and so I was, I was prepared to talk about, um, I was prepared to talk about it tonight, but I'll talk about it now.
We can, you can wait till tonight. That's fine. I was just wondering about like federal lobbyists and, you know, how are we strategically thinking about this in terms of funding?
Yeah. I'll give you an update on what we're, what we're, what we're doing.
Yep.
Both tunnels.
Both tunnels. Perfect. Even better. Two, two for one. Can we get a price discount? Thank you.
Crypto.
Pay it in Bitcoin.
Yeah.
Mayor, uh, I, I apologize. I did forget to mention, I forgot to mention the 12th Annual Seafood Festival.
Oh, this Saturday.
At Esplanade Park this Saturday. Um, my apologies.
Stone Crab and Seafood Festival.
Yes. It's a, it's a big one.
Eleven to five, I think.
I think so.
Yeah.
That's this Saturday, Esplanade Park, 12th Annual Seafood Festival. Thank you.
Absolutely. I was going to mention it in my comments, but I'm glad you did.
Okay. Well, I didn't know.
Okay.
You just recently made it to Bonnet House. So thank you.
And I've been, I went to it last year and it was really, really great. So.
It is. It's a great.
Even though we had, we were in the middle of COVID, it was still, you know, a great event.
Thank you.
So welcome back everybody from the holidays. And, uh, I wanted to say that we did our, our New Year's Eve downtown countdown, which was, uh, an amazing success. And, uh, um, and quite a few people from all, I met people from the Netherlands. I met people from Coral Springs, all these outlying places. And.
Coral Springs and the Netherlands.
And even District One. Uh, some people do come south of.
Anyone in between.
She's aware of that. But I had an idea, Vice Mayor, uh, something we can think about.
A party in District One?
Uh, yeah, it'll affect District One.
Okay.
I was thinking that maybe we should, uh, up, up, you know, up our game a little bit. And, uh, uh, and I think we've had good success at Hemershey Street and it's been, it turned out a lot of nice people. And, but I'm thinking that maybe we should start talking about having a, you know, a, a real signature event with, uh, with a named, uh, singer or, or group and really up our game and, and perhaps talk with our folks at Inter Miami to see if we could host the next event at, at the stadium. And, you know, uh, Miami had, uh, Miley Cyrus there in Bayfront Park. So it was a huge place to, to accommodate people. But what about doing, you know, this is a beautiful stadium and, and maybe the folks at Inter Miami could partner with us and be a big sponsor and maybe, maybe bring a group there, you know, uh, like the Spice Girls. I mean.
Great.
Uh, but, or somebody, you know, so that, you know, let's, we're ready for that. I think, uh, and I think next year at this time, um, uh, I think we could really pull together a great event, but, uh, something I thought about and.
Well, that sounds great and I would love it and welcome it. And we do, we had about four events, four or five events there a year. So, um, I'm ready to certainly plan something.
Okay. Great. You folks think, uh, we're ready for that?
Yes. I'm sorry, I won't be in town, but yes, I think it sounds great.
Are you already pre-booked?
I'm already pre-booked. Thank you. Yes.
It doesn't have to be New Year's Eve. It could be a different, different day.
Yeah. Get those great deals at those future cruise desk options. Yeah.
Oh, really? Okay.
Nice.
So, uh, okay. Sorry. So we'll work on that. Um, yesterday we had, we held a press conference to announce the opening of a testing site, our second testing site at Snyder Park. Um, uh, again, trying to, um, you know, find our way to somehow secure more safety features within our community. Uh, it, we, it more than doubled our capacity by adding Snyder Park. And, uh, it's open from 8:00 AM in the morning to 5:00 PM in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. Uh, we do both the rapid test and the PCR test. And so, uh, I've been, every time I drive around the streets of the city, I see lines around these makeshift tents and, and, uh, trying to reduce that so that people do not have to wait in line as long as they have been. I think testing is a key to, uh, to trying to put our, our, you know, trying to get ahead of the, ahead of this problem of, of the spread of this virus serves almost like a roadmap to give us clues as to, you know, where we're finding the disease and how we can, uh, how we can prescribe its spread. So, um, you know, I, I encourage people to, uh, to get tested either during, at one of these test sites or even doing the home test sites, uh, the home testing. Um, I had Christmas dinner at my house and, uh, I made everybody take a test before they came to dinner, uh, because it's just, it's just not fair to anybody. Fortunately, everybody tested negative. So, um, uh, so anyway, I'm very proud. Thank you, Chris, for organizing the, uh, the, uh, the new testing site and, uh, and our partners at Alliance, um, who are working with us to, to make this a success. And I'm hoping that someday we'll look back and feel that, you know, how quaint it was that we did things like this because we no longer have to deal with this disease. But in the meantime, we have to deal with it. And I know that different governments are addressing it in different ways, but I'm proud to say that the city of Fort Lauderdale is, um, is moving in this direction and, and, and finding that this is the most appropriate way in which to try to eradicate this disease.
Mayor, did, was, was, I think, was today the first day that it was actually open?
It was the first day.
Okay. Do we, any feedback, Chris, in just numbers or how it's going or?
I don't have any yet. I don't know if either of our, I'll, I'll see if I can get an update between this meeting and the.
Maybe tonight. I'd like, I'm just interested how many numbers, how, how it's going. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Commissioner Sorenson mentioned the ribbon cutting we did today at the Southeast 10th Avenue Restoration Project. Really great job that was done there. Um, a lot of people from the new community showed up and, uh, thank you, Commissioner Sorenson for helping to organize that. Uh, now, this Friday, there's a, another ribbon cutting for the Cordova Seawall, uh, that we, I think it's at 2:30. Uh, another accomplishment by the city in terms of trying to deal with climate change and rising sea levels. And, uh, I want to thank staff and, uh, and our contractors for making that a successful project. Every time I go by there, I just feel, you know, Cordova is safe. They really, they built a beautiful structure there and I hope it'll continue to last for years ahead. Um, let's see. Uh, January 14th is the groundbreaking for Edgewood and River Oak Stormwater Improvement Projects. That's at 1:00 PM. And, um, and unfortunately we heard that the Martin Luther King Day Parade has been canceled by the organizers. Um, just so that everybody understands that's not a city event. Uh, the city does encourage it. The city tries to participate within it, but it is not organized or run by the city. We still will have the day of service at the, um, LA Lee YMCA that morning, but the parade itself is, is canceled.
We, I haven't gotten any information about, I don't think, about that day of service. Is that, has that been emailed out or whatever the mayor was just mentioning?
I don't have any information on it, but, uh, it's, it's something that usually precedes the, uh.
Right.
The event, the Martin Luther King Day, uh, but you know, they.
I just received an email this morning about their inspirational breakfast. So information may start to filter out.
Okay.
But as recent as this morning was the first time I'd seen information on that breakfast.
Is that building still there? Didn't they sell it? Weren't they gonna do something?
Wait, say it again.
Is the building, LA Lee's, it's still there? Or didn't they sell it? Or weren't they gonna demolish it?
Well, where is it gonna be? The new building? Cause I know the new building's finished. Do we give them a CO? Where's our building department? Have we given them a CO yet?
Yeah, I can, I'll check.
I don't believe we've given them a CO. I know they've, um, requested an extension on a completion date until end of Q1 2022 because there's still some punch work to do in that building.
All right. So it'll be at the old building then, I guess. But I thought we did sell it though.
Well, I, yeah, something happened. They sold it. We sold it. Somebody sold it.
All right, so we'll find out where the Day of Service is going to happen.
Oh, oh, yeah.
All right. A couple of things, redistricting, do we have a report on where we are with regard to the process?
Yes, after our last meeting and the direction from the commission, we are in receipt of two academic proposals, one from FIU, one from FAU. We're evaluating and comparing them now, and I will have a recommendation to bring forward at the meeting on January 18th. As long as we are started by February the 1st, both of the organizations are capable of meeting a timeline to be complete before the end of April.
April, okay.
And just, can you just walk me through, because this is all kind of new to me, so they make some suggestions, have it complete by end of April, just walk me through what happens next?
Then we submit new maps.
To who?
And then the city commission decides which maps they want to adopt.
Correct.
We can massage the, we can do, we don't have to accept it entirely, we can
And then it'll go to the Secretary of Elections.
Because of neighborhood or a street or somebody you don't like or you don't like. Did I look at you?
There'll be some parameters that the law creates that says that these are the certain requirements for each district. And candidly, with the computer technology the way it exists today, you put in those parameters and it only can slice, induce up our city so many ways.
Okay.
And it still meet compliance with what the statute says.
Got it.
And so there will be input from you all, input from the public. The main difference in the two proposals is one proposal offers an online interactive ability to participate where the other proposal does not.
Okay.
I'm balancing that, frankly, with the discussion I heard with the commission on the, the amount of like you had for, or some members of commission had for the Broward County process. You know, is it worth just following in their footsteps so that we have a similar experience? That process would include an online option, but on a cost basis is about twice as much. And so I'm balancing whether or not the online option and following in those footsteps is worth the difference between $35,000 and $60,000, basically.
That's a lot of money.
And so who sets the deadline for April? Is that Broward County?
Just early on in the process, the Secretary of Elections indicated a date by which they would like to have new maps. I don't think it's a hard deadline, I think it's a self-imposed deadline. But it's a deadline that we want to make sure that we aren't the only ones that don't meet it.
Right.
And both of these institutions were able to provide timelines that if we make a decision on the 18th of January, we can get across the finish line well in advance of the self-imposed deadline that may have been created for us.
Okay, so the state secretary of
It was one of those, I, strong suggestions that I'd like to have the maps by
By
This date.
April. Okay, so we submit this maps in April to the state and to the county?
Yes.
Basically, okay, and then what happens?
And then that will become the new district maps for future elections.
So the state or the county don't have to approve it?
No, they don't have to approve it. We have to approve it.
We approve it.
And then we just send it, they just put it in their file cabinet.
Okay, and so then, great, so then that takes effect when?
Upon adoption.
The next election?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or upon adoption?
I don't know that answer. I'll have to, whether it's, whether that becomes upon your adoption or whether it becomes upon the first time that it's used.
Exactly.
It would seem as though it would become effective upon your adoption.
I believe it's upon adoption.
Yes.
It's upon adoption.
Run, you have to file to run.
So, so in other words, my, the HOAs in my district could change in April?
I believe so, yeah.
Maybe, maybe, maybe not.
Maybe you may not. Okay, so that'll change immediately, possibly, who, who we represent.
Right. So keep in mind, if, for any, let's say, for example, there's a special election that we need to do between now and the end of our term.
Right.
Those maps would dictate which district that, that, that district would represent, that district commissioner would represent.
But Commissioner Sorenson brings up a good point. Would we, does it change before then? In other words, what Commissioner Sorenson asked was, will he be representing different neighborhood associations as soon as we adopt this in April or no?
I believe upon adoption, yes, it becomes effective.
So we have to let all of these neighborhoods know in April, roughly, then what district they're in?
That's my understanding. Let's see if the city attorney concurs with me. I believe it's effective upon adoption.
That, that's my understanding as well. We'll obviously verify for you, but this is, will be a public process to it as, obviously, as you adopt these, as, as the county has adopted them. But we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and verify that information for you. You know what? That's interesting. That's interesting because there was an election and people voted for representation, and then you're saying now you're no longer represented by who you voted for.
That's why I think it'll stay the same until 2024.
That's an interesting concept, that adoption would trump who people voted for in an election. Just a thought.
Yeah, I don't, I remember when George went through it, I don't remember his, his neighborhoods changing or anything until the new election.
Well, the county, they changed
I have not been through it in Florida. I can tell you how it works in Georgia.
Right, right.
It's going to work down, it's going to work here.
The county adopted new boundaries, and they're going to have new elections this November in, in a couple of those districts where two commissioners had to resign. Now, let's say, for example, Tim Ryan, okay, who's our current commissioner. Is he now not our current commissioner? Because, because he's, he's not, we're not in his district anymore.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's, my understanding is, is it's immediate. Like, he's immediately no longer my commissioner.
So Lamar Fisher
That's my understanding, but I could be wrong.
Can we verify that?
We can.
Yeah, let's verify that.
To be sure. But I believe, and it's a pretty strong belief, that it's effective upon adoption.
Yeah, if you can find that out, I'll stop bothering Commissioner Ryan now.
Mayor, I think we're going to need counselors for those who might leave Commissioner Glassman's district. I mean, the sadness that could happen.
I'm glad, I hope you take
There'll be a memorial
Depression.
That's going to be very sad.
We can, if you can give us that list.
I, I think, I mean, I think empirically, we could say your district is going to shrink, your district is going to shrink geographically.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, and, and District One's going
Yes, I will take them all. Erica and Melissa are ready.
Vice Mayor's looking for some more people.
I'm ready.
You and Commissioner McKenzie will be gaining from Sorenson's
That's exactly what they want.
We're the donor, we're the donor.
We're the donors.
Thank you.
Donor, commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next thing, and I'm not sure if you're prepared to respond to this, Chris, but you know, we've been getting a lot of messages from Holy Cross Hospital that, you know, they're no longer part of the Cigna network, and that really impacts a lot of us, yours truly. I got a text yesterday from the CEO of Holy Cross saying, like, where can we go with this? Apparently, the issue is that Cigna is not interested in absorbing the costs of, that have been incurred as a result of COVID. COVID has increased the cost of, of nursing care, has increased the cost of a lot of things, and apparently, they're, they're having a duel over that. What is your take on this?
Yeah, my take on it is that it's been negotiations between Cigna and Holy Cross, and that those negotiations have subsequently broken down and they've not agreed on a renewal, and that that's happened around us. So I've explored what the opportunity would be to look either at a different provider that could bring Holy Cross back in, but have been disheartened by the amount of increase that Holy Cross, in fact, was seeing. I think we would have just as many people concerned over the rate increase if it were to be absorbed by Cigna and passed along. Again, it's a business decision of Cigna, not necessarily us. If it's important that Holy Cross is an in-network provider, then we simply would need to go back to the market and, and land on a different healthcare provider other than Cigna, because it's not looking as though they're going to be able to figure out their differences.
So the only hospital that's in our, that's in our, that's, that's covered is now just Broward General?
And Memorial is still in that.
And Memorial in Hollywood, yeah. All right.
I can, I can provide in a better detail. I'll have our HR and Risk Department put together an explanation, and I'll send it as a commission memo.
So is there anything we can do to try to encourage Cigna to come to the table? I mean, it seems like, you know, they've just stopped talking.
You know, moving to a different vendor, or at least signaling our intention to move to a different vendor, potentially would cause them to
Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Engage in that.
Aware of this going on? You must all be aware of it, right? Are you on the city insurance?
No, I'm not. I don't, I don't receive any benefits from the city at all. And I mean, and I, and I, and I mean at all.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't looking at you.
We're so fortunate to have you.
Yeah, I'll give you a list of all of my complaints when it comes to all of that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Hey, you already had your turn.
Got some, please share.
Yes, I will share eventually.
I, I received a lot of emails as well, and I was actually born at Holy Cross, so, yes, and I use it, it is in District One. But I know we can still use it, obviously, we just have to pay out-of-network prices. Anything we could do would be great, so, thank you.
Okay. Okay. And lastly, just, I continue to get these sightings of these motorcycle gangs that are roaming through our city, and our former mayor, Jim, Jim Nogal, sent us a video of, of dozens of motorcyclists careening through the tunnel, doing wheelies in the lane where you're not supposed to travel. It's just an interesting video he sent. We contacted our chief of police, Larry Scarrato, who was kind enough to give us a a summary of some of the, of the, some of the encounters that they have made throughout the course of December. A number of interdictions with these groups and how they've turned them around, but clearly more has to be done, and I know, Chief, that you're aware of that, but I just want the public to know that, you know, it's not like we're not aware of it, and it's not like we're not doing anything, it's just that the, the amount of these kinds of activities continue to increase. And I'm not sure why Fort Lauderdale is becoming a staging area for these sort of, you know, theatrics on our streets, but they certainly pose a threat to a lot of people. People feel in fear of their lives when they encounter this, and, and the safety of themselves and their families in the cars is something that we need, should be very cognizant of and do our best to try to, you know, crack down on this entirely. So just want to bring it to everyone's attention. Okay, that's it for me.
Mayor, just on that, yeah, it's, I mean, I live two houses.
Right near
I live two houses from the tunnel.
Near your house?
Yeah.
Is that you I saw it though?
It's Sunday, yeah, it was not me. But Sunday afternoons, it's just brutal, and I want to go out there and just yell at these people. I don't, it's so frustrating and scary because I see these people in cars that are driving, and they just get sworn by these folks, and, and they're, I know they're scared and don't know what's going on. I'm worried about, you know, we've seen just horrible things happening. I, I, I don't know what to do.
It's very frustrating, but our police department has now become much more proactive in responding to it. And I want to thank the chief for, for taking this on, but clearly, we need to engage more and more people on the roads and, and however else you, you can intercept these, you know, these groups because it really is becoming more and more of a problem, not just downtown, but on A1A and, 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 you know, everywhere in between. It's just, you know, I've never seen this in our city before. It's like, it's like all of a sudden become a thing, so
What, Chief, what, what should we do just as regular citizens? I mean, just walk me through a safety standpoint, or should we call 911? And again, just for my recollection, it's, what's illegal? It's riding dirt bikes, I think, is illegal, and ATVs, and give me a little bit of guidance, just.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, the reality of it is, is it's become a, a new level of entertainment for, for those that are operating in our cities. I, I mean, the mayor made it pretty clear when I arrived here in August. I think the first commission meeting, the statement was, doing nothing is not an option. And I took that seriously, and the organization, our department, takes it seriously, and, and we hadn't had that same level of intention on enforcement prior to my arrival, and then for various reasons. We have a pursuit policy that didn't support that type of engagement. We had an administration that, that didn't make that a priority for the police department as well. As a citizen, I would suggest our community continue to call 911. Oftentimes, they refer to this non-emergency number, and they're frustrated with the lack of response or the delays in response. The reality is sometimes we're just not aware of it. For instance, I'm not sure you were provided the, the synopsis from the last, from October till today. I mean, we had encountered over 600 motorcycles. We had made 25 arrests, we had towed 28 of the vehicles, we've had, so we have, we've kept them off of A1A, we've kept them off of Las Olas. We have had a overtime detail in cooperation with our patrol district since October the 3rd up to today, and we'll continue that moving forward. We've partnered with RTCC BSO Aviation Unit, so we're working with our intelligence investigators to identify them in advance and, and still with the understanding that whenever we are engaging with these motorcycles or these ATVs, that, that we have to be careful in what, what type of tactics we, we deploy. Wouldn't have to look further than a week or two ago with Boynton Beach and, and the dirt bike and the fatality that was caused in that instance, and, and that tragedy. And how do we avoid that here with still being prudent with enforcement? And then that's the challenge. What I take back to my officers is doing nothing is not an option. And I stand by that, and, and we'll continue the strategy moving forward, understanding that we have to be careful. We're going to start working on messaging and marketing campaigns, billboards. There's not a single place in Fort Lauderdale that you can operate an ATV or a dirt bike. And that's just reality. So making parents, caretakers aware of that illegal behavior when they're thinking or considering of purchasing one of these, these ATVs or dirt bikes for their kid. There's not one single place in the city that's legal to ride it. And then just continue, continue our enforcement efforts, continue to attempt to stop and enforce the traffic laws that we have available to us for, for all of our officers, and that is a continued priority, but understanding that we also have a pursuit policy that if those individuals choose not to, to follow or obey the laws, that we have other remedies of enforcement as well, and we'll continue to take those actions, whether it's identifying them later, impounding their vehicles, making arrests from the flight, et cetera.
Okay, thanks, that's really great. The, so, just so I'm, make sure I'm understanding the law. Is it legal to operate an ATV or a dirt bike in the city of Fort Lauderdale, right?
On our roadways, there's no, there's no place that that's legal. It's not, vehicles aren't registered in, in that regard, and they're not licensed or insured to be on the roadways.
Okay, and then, I'm, I'm assuming it's also illegal to recklessly operate a motorcycle on the
It's illegal to do wheelies, it's illegal to ride in the, in the, in the, in the construction lanes.
Right.
It's to overtake vehicles. This is not a state that motorcycles have right of way. Some other states have that where motorcycles can pass on either side of the vehicles, can go through the middle lane. This is not one of those states.
Okay.
They have to follow the same rules as a car.
Yep.
And, and so therefore, it's just a matter of continuing that enforcement.
Okay, so if I, when I, because I hear them so often at my house, so when I hear them, your suggestion to me is call 911 and just say dirt bikes, ATVs, northbound on Federal Highway going into the tunnel?
Right, and then let our officers start proactively looking for them to enforce the laws. Like I said, we've done, I think we've done a really good job over the last three months of keeping them off the beach, keeping them off Las Olas, keeping them out of our high-vis neighborhoods. The reality is they still have access points to the city that we can't control.
Yep.
And there are going to be times that they get through. In this instance, the video the other day was the time they got through.
Yep.
We had an enforcement team out there. We have a very clear idea of where they're congregating to begin with.
Great.
Start enforcing from there, and, and again, we're just making it very uncomfortable for those actions to take place in our city unchecked. And we'll continue to do so.
Yep, okay, that sounds great to me. All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
Chief, I have a couple of questions too. Thanks, Ben, for bringing this up. So, good points. I don't know why it was my understanding that some of these vehicles were allowed to legally operate on our streets. And maybe that was just the motorcycles that we had discussed in the past, but we're seeing a mix of dirt bikes, ATVs, and legally licensed or operating, you know, vehicles on our streets. So I, you also mentioned maybe a possible campaign where you let people know about this. Are you going to have something we can share and just let our neighbors know when you see this happening? Please blank or call 911?
Right, we're going to, so we're working with my PIO, and we're going to start like creating a marketing campaign for, for that issue. And it's, it's to everyone, it's to our community, our citizens when they see that type of behavior. It's also to, again, the, the parents and caregivers of, of those that are participating in this action. We had a traffic fatality right, right around Christmas, an 18-year-old on ATV crashed, and he perished at the hospital a few days later. So it's dangerous to everyone, including from members of our community to the actual participants in the ATVs.
Sure, well, I know you'll probably go to a lot of these annual meetings we have in our neighborhoods starting in January. Or if you don't know about them, we'll certainly share them with you, because I'm sure they'd love to hear from you, but we usually have our annual meetings in, in the spring. So I think that'd be something great to bring up, because then we all hear about it throughout our, our whole city, so I think they would really love to hear that from you. And I think you, you mentioned something about a summary report in October to now. Was that something that was emailed? Is that something?
It was distributed to the mayor's office, but I'll make sure that the rest of you have it as well.
Okay, thank you. And it was a summary of just the motorcycles or just?
It's
I don't know if I I don't know if I, I could have, I could have missed it, but I don't, I, okay. I'd love to get it if, if, uh, I didn't, but maybe I did.
The Vice Mayor was just, it was just a summary of the enforcement efforts. I'll ensure that you have it by the end of this meeting.
Okay, thank you, and I think that's it. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Chief, Chief, I just got a text about, uh, riders, a lot of mornings, three AM, A1A and Seventeenth Street. Three AM, A1A, Seventeenth Street.
On that, they're doing that loop from Two Street, so we'd started to, to redirect Two Street. Cause they're making that whole loop from Two Street. They go out A1A, cross Seventeenth, come back in.
Down, yeah.
So we, we had, that's on Wednesdays, I believe. And, and so we have increased enforcement down on Two Street with the district so that we start to, to make that, that loop non-accessible. Again, it's, it's, the reality of it is just making it uncomfortable to come to Fort Lauderdale to participate in that activity. And I'll continue to advocate for that.
Yep, awesome. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll make sure my office communicates our annual meetings to you. And Mayor, I don't know if you've been invited as well, but we have Imperial Point, Corrid Country Club.
Actually, I was invited to Imperial Point, um, uh, which I may attend.
It's gonna be Zoom now. I'll have Erica work with Scott and make sure you're invited to all of them. And Chief, I'll share that with you and I know sometimes you attend too, Chris, so we'll just share those.
Thank you.
About eight of them coming up. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lagerblum, do you have any, any report?
Uh, just, uh, quickly, nothing that I haven't already talked to you about individually. Just let you know tomorrow I have to travel to a, a Celebration of Life service over in Tampa. So I'll be on the road tomorrow if you need me. Um, it'll be a day trip where I'm there and back on the same day. Other than that, nothing that, uh, um, I can tell you is for a former commissioner that I had the opportunity to serve back in the day. So I'm glad it's none of you all. Um, uh, that's, uh, all I have and, uh, we've got a little bit of a break now between now and, and tonight's meeting.
I have one update for the Y. So the old one is, has been torn down and the new one will open in April.
Wait, wait, what's torn down?
LA, the LA Lee Y is no longer there.
It has been torn down?
Yes, it has been torn down and the grand opening will be in April, so we'll get more information.
Okay, so where is the, uh?
Uh, they're just doing it small, small, different locations around. I just said if they have any opportunities for us to.
Okay, all right. Okay. Any further business there being done? We'll see you at six.